I will, would like to call to order the regular planning commission meeting of August 13th. And invite everybody to please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item three on our agenda is roll call. Chair Nemeth?
Here.
Vice Chair Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Frazasane? Commissioner Henderson?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Thank you. We are all in attendance. Item four is the review of our agenda.
We have no changes to the agenda tonight.
Very good. Thank you very much. May I please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions on the agenda? I have a motion from Commissioner Avery. And a second from Commissioner Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Thank you. Item six on our agenda is public comments. And those are on our consent calendar items or on any items that are not on our agenda. And did we receive any electronic comments for tonight's meeting?
Not under general comments, no.
Okay, alright. Thank you very much. Then that will move us on to our consent calendar. Our consent calendar consists of the approval of the minutes from last month's meeting. May I have a motion?
Some more?
We have a motion from Commissioner Farag Hassan and a second from Commissioner Avery. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, and any abstentions? Alright, and one abstention. So that's four in favor, no opposed, one abstaining due to absence from last month. Alright, the minutes are approved. That will bring us to item 8A, our first public hearing for the evening.
And this item will be presented by Jasmine Alvarado.
To tentative track map 60431. The applicant is requesting to phase TTM 60431 for the subdivision of 76.8 acres into 155 single-family residential lots. The applicant, the project site is located at the northwest corner of Avenue M8 and 70th Street West on two vacant parcels. The proposed phasing of TTM 60431 will be conducted in three phases. As proposed, each phase of the project is independent and will incorporate all the necessary infrastructure to be consistent with the city standards. Phase street improvements, including curb, gutter, sidewalk, paving within the subdivision are required to be constructed by the applicant to support each individual face. Phase one will include construction of lots 1 through 14, 31 through 42, 52 through 76, for a total of 51 lots. Along with associated on and off-site improvements such as streets, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and fencing necessary to support each phase, uh, phase one. Phase one will also include pavement and frontage improvements, fronting a detention basin located at the southwest corner of Avenue M8 and 70th, 70th Street West. Did I go too far ahead? Sorry. Phase two will include the construction of lots 15 through 30, 43 through 51, 77 through 96, and 149 through 155. For a total of 52 lots, along with associated on and off-site improvements. Phase three will include construction of the remaining lots, 97 through 48, for a total of 52 lots, along with associated on and off-site improvements. All lots meet the minimum development standards, including lot width, lot depth, and area requirements. The proposed major modification to TTM 60431 includes moving of the detention basin from lots 33 through 36 to the southwest corner of 70th Street West and Avenue M8. As specified, within the conditions of approval, within Resolution PC 2011 007, the applicant was required to construct a detention drainage basin offsite in the southwest corner of 70th Street West and Avenue M8 within phase one of the project. Therefore, the number of proposed residential lots increases from 151 to 155. So with that, the planning commission has three options. Option one is to adopt a resolution approving, resolution approving TTM 60431, major modification number one. Option two is to continue the project. Option three is to deny the project. Option one is recommended. I'm here for any questions.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Alvarado. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Alright, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. Did we receive any comments on this item?
We did, yes. The first one is from a guest user. The comment is in opposition, and the comment is, "This area is prone to flooding. This area should be preserved and kept as open space for the residents who currently live nearby. The schools are already overcrowded. We do not have enough police and fire departments to serve the current residents. We do not need any more construction in our area. There is wildlife, which would be affected if more construction takes place. We have lived through a year of construction already. Please develop other areas in the city as flatland, such as flatland." The next comment is a guest user, and they are also in opposition. "I have lived across the street from this area for almost 11 years. I really would like to speak to the person who did environmental study. I don't believe anybody has spent any time studying it. First of all, that area floods. Why would you build houses in a flood zone? Also, we live in the desert and it's the only mountains around. Why spoil the view? The recreation area, the wildlife. Build in flatlands instead of putting in ugly solar panels that do the resonance of the area nothing." And those are the only comments.
Okay, thank you very much. And is the applicant here? Alright, could you please come forward and state your name, and you have three minutes to speak to us, and then if anybody has questions here, we would ask them of you.
I'm the civil engineer. Requesting a phasing of the map. I just want to say about the flooding issue, that the whole idea of the regional basin that we have to build as part of this project is to protect anything north of M8 that is currently flooding. That will be protected by that basin, and we are conditioned to run the storm drain to the regional basin on M and 65th, I believe. Any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Do anybody have questions for the applicant?
So all of the flooding will run into that basin? It'll be kind of engineered to run into the basin?
Correct. Anything south of us.
So any of the flooding that they were worried about they were getting before is actually getting fixed?
Yes, any flooding that was going through this project is going to be collected in the basin. And it will be channeled underground with the pipes. So yes, there will be no flooding through the site.
So when you have the basin, there's also like a drainage that goes to the sewer that takes it away somewhere?
The storm drain, right. There is a standpipe, and it's designed to collect 50 years of storm. It's a regional basin, so it will collect up to a 50-year storm. And it will be channeled underground through 70th West to east on M to the regional basin on 65th.
And that portion is completed with phase one, correct?
That has to be with phase one, yes.
Okay, so that'll take place in the beginning of all of this?
Beginning, yes.
Wonderful. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, then, if there is nobody else here to speak on this item, I will close the public hearing if there are no objections. And open it up for commissioner discussion. Does anybody have any comments to say on this? And if there are none, I just want to say I think it makes a lot of sense to phase it in today's economy. I know there's a lot going on, but I think the phasing is a good idea. That way, we know we can get it done in an economical fashion, as well as take care of the flooding that people seem to be concerned about, so. I think it's a good idea. If there's no other discussion, may I get a motion on this item, and we will be using our touchscreen for that?
I'll move to adopt option number one.
Alright, I have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second from Commissioner Smith. Is there any discussion on the motion? Very good. Alright, then we shall call for the question. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much for your time this evening. And thank you, Ms. Alvarado. Alright. That means water's sitting fine, huh? While we prepare for item 8B.
Yes, and just kind of a housekeeping thing, I know that we can't hear our microphones, but it is working on our broadcast, so keep using your touch buttons because it is facilitating that. Internally, there's some glitches going on, but it sounds like it's working for our broadcast, so. And this item is going to be presented by Justin Sauter.
Good evening, Planning Commission. So tonight, the applicant is requesting to establish a The applicant is requesting to establish a dance fitness studio within an existing tenant space in a shopping center on the southeast corner of Palmdale Boulevard and 10th Street West. A dance fitness studio is allowed but used within the C4 zone with the approval of a CUP. The studio will offer recreational, professional walk-in classes for dancers of all ages. The name of the studio is Starborn Dance Studio. And it is proposed within an existing tenant space, Unit 846. There are no exterior modifications or expansions proposed to the building. And the site meets or exceeds all PMC requirements. Here is a floor plan of the studio. It will include several different dance floors where members can work with choreographers to prepare for performances, auditions, competitions. And the classes are anticipated to average about 20 students. So they have a main dance floor and three other smaller dance floors. The site is currently underparked. However, the center has not historically experienced any parking issues. Although there is currently a parking deficit, the planning commission may approve the use with the deficit as long as suitable area exists onsite to provide additional parking spaces if the need arises. There is suitable area for additional parking on the site because the shopping center is located on the northwest portion of an eight-acre parcel. There is sufficient parking, there is sufficient space for additional parking if it is deemed necessary, as indicated here, the arrows. There's also been a condition of approval included on the project requiring additional parking if it becomes an issue in the future. The planning commission has three options tonight. Option one is to adopt the resolution approving the fitness center, dance studio. Option two is to continue the project. Option three is to deny the project. Option one is recommended, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Do the commissioners have any technical questions for staff at this time? I just wanted to, I believe, is this where Thanos Fitness was previously located?
Uh, yes, yes, yes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, if there are no technical questions, then I would like to open this item for open the public hearing on this item. And did we receive any e comments on this?
We did not.
Alright, then. I know the applicant is here, so come on up and have your moment in our little spotlight here. I do request, please state your name, and then you have three minutes to speak, and then if any of us have questions for you, we will ask them at the end. Okay? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Thakisha Talisma. I am one of the owners of Starborn Dance Studio.
And mine is Peter Santa Lysma. You're husband and wife?
First best friends, but yes, husband and wife. We're really excited about this, and we're, we just can't wait to get things started. We enjoy working with the community. We've been dancing for such a long time, and we are professional dancers. I'm a former Laker girl. I danced with Detroit Pistons for three consecutive years. Same as the San Diego Chargers, which is now the LA Chargers. And I retired as a Los Angeles Laker girl because I had a baby.
So we have a two-year-old daughter. Yeah, so the great thing about us is the fact that for us, we've been dancing for over 15 years in the dance industry. We actually from, we came from North Hollywood. And there we still part of our dances agency, so we're part of the commuters on the freeway. And once we moved to Palmdale, we fell in love with this place. And we saw so many potentials as far as the students here, the kids here, and we just want to serve the community the best way we can. So for us, the studio is our baby, so this is how we, we, we serve this community by offering classes.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have questions, comments?
Will they actually let you start doing business, or do you have to wait until they open up business?
Yeah, we're still waiting for, yeah, we have to wait, just like that.
Yeah, just see what we would need to do.
That's too bad. How long have you been going through this process to get everything approved?
Well.
Before March?
It's actually, yeah, it was actually right around March. It actually happens right around March. But as far as the COVID, we follow just like we, everyone else. So the moment they give us a okay to go, then we'll be, we'll be
Good to go.
Good to go.
Well, hopefully that will be soon, and they won't drag you out forever.
Yeah.
This great new opportunity, you know, this new venture.
Yes, exactly.
And hopefully you can get it up and going.
Yeah.
It'll be nice.
Yeah, so we'll, so we'll
And if we had music playing, I would have you audition right now.
Dancers don't necessarily need actual music.
I really like your business idea, and I'm glad that we're filling a space we just vacated. So I think that's, that's a nice, a nice idea.
Let me add, just for transparency purposes as well. I've had the opportunity to know these two powerful individuals, married couple. They actually was next to a church that I was at not too long ago, and to see you expand and grow right now is really commendable, so keep up the great work. I have not spoken to them about this prior to coming here, because I didn't realize you were actually on the agenda, so I'm so happy to see you guys expand. Keep up the great work.
But can they teach you to sing, Jesse?
No. They can teach me to dance. She said my daughter actually had an opportunity to participate in one of their programs, and they also, you guys actually performed at one of my MLK events.
Yes, we did.
Maybe a year ago, so keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You may have a seat. And if there is nobody else here to speak on this item, I will close the public hearing if there are no objections. Alright, commissioner discussion on the item. I think it's a good idea, so.
I love it. We gotta see our first celebrity applicant, too. That's kinda cool.
So alright, if there's no discussion, may I please, using our touchscreen, get a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve item 8B, or option one, as recommended by staff.
Now, second motion.
Alright, let the record reflect. I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson and a second from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, then let us call for the question. Using our touchscreens when they are available. I tend to talk too fast, so that's my problem here. I'll take all full responsibility. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. So congratulations. You've achieved this hurdle. Now you get to go out and paint walls and do all those other fun things, probably. Alright, thank you very much.
When you start teaching us how to sing, I'll be right there.
Alright, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Justin. Alright, that will bring us to item nine, staff communications.
Yes, thank you. So as you see, we have a couple items on our September agenda. It's actually going to be some revision. But the biggest one is we are going to be bringing forth the general plan land use alternative discussion. So we're kind of doing a roadshow right now in terms of public outreach, virtually, as well as some physical locations. Trying to get as many public participants in the process, and we are kind of doing the last party at Planning Commission and City Council. So we'll be here in September presenting and getting your guys' feedback at that time. And then we'll move on to City Council at their workshop meeting in September. So if the planning commissioners haven't talked to their friends about filling out our general plan survey, please do. And I would highly encourage anybody watching this to go to Palmdale 2045 to go ahead and fill out that survey and give us your valuable input. I also, this is going to be another month, hopefully two months of this statement, but please make sure that we are encouraging people to fill out their census. It's really important to, you know, continue to fund things like school lunches and those important programs that are out there. I also wanted to let the planning commission know that the valuable training that Ruben provided all of you in regards to VMT, the county has actually come out with some guidance. So we're excited we're learning and moving through that process and looking forward to kind of going towards a resolution to adopt those standards. So we'll keep you guys in the loop as we move forward through that. And then next Tuesday at our City Council workshop, we are going to be bringing forth kind of the alfresco two, which there's new guidance out there, obviously, that businesses are, other than restaurants, are allowed to operate outside. So we're going to be opening it up and allowing those businesses that have been approved under the state guidance to open up and under the county guidance. So that would be like a gym or a fitness studio can operate outside, so we'll be coordinating with our dance folks as well on that. So yeah, that'll be in front of them, and hopefully they'll go ahead and help move that forward to help some of our businesses that can operate outside do so. And then I know that our acting director, deputy city manager Mike, wanted to speak on some high-speed rail stuff, so I will see if he wants to come forward and talk to you guys about that.
Please come forward, high-speed rail guru.
Thank you for having me. Mike Dehen, Deputy City Manager. Wanted to take a few minutes to talk to you about the Bright Line. Previously, Bright Line and Virgin Trains. So the latest news is that there's been a breakup. And that Virgin Trains is no longer a and that Virgin Trains is no longer affiliated with Bright Line. They, uh, separated. I don't want to rumor, but they're no longer together. So, uh, the good news, though, is that they're gonna start construction on the, uh, the line between, uh, Victorville and Las Vegas. They'll start it in October of this year. So it's just a few months away. It'll be a three-year build. They'll complete by twenty twenty-three. Couple stats on the project. The cost has gone up quite a bit, just in two years. The cost has gone up two billion dollars, and, you know, this is what we're reading. I'm not sure what the exact cost is, but I read six point nine billion today, and two years ago it was five something billion, so of course, over time, uh, costs go up. Primarily funded by private activity bonds and also some private funding, uh, from the Las Vegas area. The travel time, one hour fifteen minutes, and your round-trip ticket in today's dollars is a hundred and twenty dollars. Not too bad. In terms of wherever this, uh, line be, it'll be in the middle of the I fifteen. There's plenty of rideaway in the middle. It'll be at grade. And they'll do, uh, construction for different segments, and hopefully they'll have Golden Spike parties that will be invited to while, while they connect. So in, in terms of, that, that's that phase, so that's, that's moving forward. In terms of, uh, phase two, we're hoping to have the system connect to our station in twenty twenty-six. There is some work that needs to be done before we get there, but that's, that's the goal. I know that's, I know that's a, a bit off, but in transportation time, that's pretty quick. So it, and the, the other thing I wanted to mention is the, um, the Palmdale Transit Area Specific Plan, or High-Speed Rail Multimodal Mega Regional Station Plan, uh, specific plan will be presented to you folks in October. So we, uh, we've been at this for a while, and we're very excited to present the plan to you for your consideration. That's all I have.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Behan?
Just a quick question. Is there any legislative action that needs to be, uh, ta, is there any legislative action that needs to be taken before, uh, uh, before any of this take place? Any, any kind of, does it need to go before the state legislature?
With this document here? No. This is, this is city document, regulatory document, and that we can approve here at this body.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Doran, any comments from you, sir?
Nothing this evening.
You're awful quiet lately. I think we know what we're doing up here now, huh?
You guys have got it handled.
Yeah, cool. All right, thank you very much. That brings us then to item ten, planning commission communications. Do any of the commissioners have anything to share, discuss, comment upon? Okay, I would like to say that I do know that our former commissioner French got married and is now Mrs. Martinez and is living in Utah, so congratulations out to Angela. Exciting stuff. And, um, that is about it. I do want to also say I had the privilege and fun experience of pulling a permit through the city this week, and it was actually really cool. It worked. So, um, thank you to all the city staff in building and safety and in planning for helping that. I now have new windows in my house, so I'm really happy. The poor window guys had to work in this heat today. I felt badly, but they did it, so. Um, no, I, 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 I think it's really interesting when, as a citizen, you get to participate and see how, how, how all this works, and it does work really well, so.
You have to pull a permit to replace your windows?
Yeah, oh, by the way, everyone out there listening, yes, you're supposed to pull a permit to replace your windows. So if you haven't, just keep your mouth shut, but you're supposed to. Yes. So anyway, um, it was a good experience, so thank you very much. And with that being said, I will adjourn our meeting to our regular planning commission meeting of Thursday, September tenth. That's seven P M. Thank you very much.
That's a hard thing.